Good morning, colleagues. This is the work session for the Guam Power Authority. Today's date is January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is now eight thirty-four, and we'll go ahead and get this session started. Mr. Benaventti?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Buenos, todo mole. Today, I have three resolutions for your consideration on Tuesday. Actually, there might be two more that is actually on the agenda for the Tuesday, but we were not able to put it on this agenda. The first one is actually approval of the T five oh one repair and rehabilitation services. This transformer is at the Harmon substation, and it's a hundred and fifteen KV that would step down from the power plant and step down to thirty-four five, then distributes to all the transmission line to other areas within the north. So it has to be repaired. It's been down since two thousand and twenty-two. The assessments were made, and then the bid was went out. And actually, we didn't have any bidders. We had to extend the bid again, and then we didn't get one bidder. And so the award, the price for the rehabilitation of the transformer is one million zero one eight thousand. And of course, because of my authorities, that one million, I'm here before you to ask your consideration. We do need to get this thing finished, and we can get it done for the final testing of the Okudu when they have to go full load for the final testing and stuff. So we're ready to proceed in this, Mr. Chair. That's the only...
Any questions, colleague?
Yeah. If the completion of the project is a hundred and eighty days, how are you going to even do your testing?
We can test except up to a hundred and ninety-eight megawatts under the final big, at the full load. So the units will start forty-five megawatts each, one, three forty-five megawatt machines. Then they'll start with forty-five with the heat recovery boiler, and then that will become sixty-three with the steam turbine. Then the next phase will be another sixty-three. So one twenty-six, and then the last one of that will be one ninety-eight.
But would this rehabilitation prevent us from them producing power and selling power to GPA?
Up at full load.
At full load? So if you bring it online, and then you're going to have to take it down in order to do this repair?
No, it's already isolated. So we're going to make the repairs. And again, even if it's at full load, one ninety-eight, we won't need full load. Because especially in the daytime and so on, so we're not running, we have the solar. And then the evening, the one ninety-eight is not adequate. We would have put the MEC anyway on the line. So we have some alternatives moving forward.
So it's not going to prevent the power plant from coming online just if they wanted to produce max capacity?
That's right.
This needs to be done?
That's our dispatching alternative.
But it'll still, it looks like it'll still be done, so six months, though. What's, when is full operational capability? What's the date? Is it August?
Right now, it's January plus six is seven, so looking will be done by July. The commissioning of the power plan, not stopped yet, but the contract is no later than September thirty, and maybe as early as August, and hopefully as early as July. So we're going to be right there at that point. Because they can test the, they don't have to go full load on the machine to test the, initially, the boiler and the steam turbine. And they can get full load, and again, one machine, full load with the steam turbine. This is one-third load, two-thirds load. So it's really, it's something that we can work around to make it happen as long as we start getting this done.
But the intent was to get it done before FOC, but you didn't have a bidder bid on it the initial time?
That's right. And so we have it now. And then, of course, we had to go through the process finding out whether we should, can be rehabilitated or should it be replaced. So we determined to rehabilitate it.
That's good. So you beat me to my question. Would it have been better just to buy a new one? You mean, just for the long term? I mean, we're in a twenty-five-year lease.
Yeah. I think with the rehabilitation, it still lasts a long time, and so we may...
What's a brand-new one cost, John? I know we had one down in Cabas.
I don't have that number, but several, several times that, because this is the hundred...
Three mil?
This is the big, how many?
The one at PD, the T seven was a four-point lead.
And the expected lifeline is... Yeah, but these are supposed to last, obviously, the life of the plant, right? Twenty-five years, maybe, or?
Maybe more. Transformers...
Oh, it's fifty years old?
Fifty years, yeah.
Oh, geez.
Yeah. And they're still, still, yeah. Because again, it grew as long as you do the maintenance stuff. You check the, you filter the oil, you do...
And we do that, right?
And we do that.
Our people do that.
That's why. So what you see later on is we will be going through rehabilitation of more and more transformers in the system as we go forward. We will be part of our, of our task discovering.
How old is this unit?
About fifty or so. Yeah. And again, it's still, we added, evaluated, it can still run. So the transformer may be whatever cost, right? But then the removal, installation, all of those other things start to add up. Remember the P seven? T seven was about a million dollars cost, but then there was another two or three million dollars for removal, installation, and all of that.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So the, the one million eighteen hundred, is that the bidding?
Yeah. That's your price.
That's your price that they mentioned?
Yeah. We tried to negotiate it down further, but that's...
That would be a good time for you to hit a home run if you tell them, my ceiling is on me.
Oh, they know.
They know?
Yeah, we did talk about it. We did bring it down a little bit, but from what we can see. That's why we wanted to do that, so I didn't have to come here.
Which leads to the next resolution. Okay.
The next resolution, Mr. Chair, is again asking your consideration to increase the GM authority from one million to one point five million. Again, even just since two thousand and twenty-one, inflation has been approximately twenty-two percent. So huge inflation air factor. So what we can buy today with what we could in two thousand and twenty-one is again decreased by that much. It's not that we don't want to come to the CC or anything like that, but it's again, you know, we do have a lot of issues that come to yourselves and things like this. Less than one point five will be one less. Coming to yourself at one point five is actually, because after you approve it, then we need to go to the PUC. Hopefully, at some point in time, the PUC also increases that protocol from one point five to a higher number. Because again, it's, it's not only takes a lot of time, it's also getting costly, a lot of review for the same...
Someone refresh my memory. I know we entertained this during my tenure.
You were the one, Mr. Chair, that actually brought from two hundred fifty thousand.
Went to the minimum.
Was there for twenty, thirty years to one million. And so again...
So I guess the question, John B., is five hundred thousand enough?
I believe...
It's not like Pluto would like, want to do the work. I think it's, to me, it's, I always make the remark that you can't go down the street and buy a million-dollar transformer at the Home Depot. Those things don't happen, so we need, I call it flexibility to do the work that you need to do. So the question I have is, notwithstanding the PUC, which I think is outdated also, but I think we just need to face reality and deal with what we're dealing with, because everything that you do in the power side is not cheap.
No, it's not at all.
So I'm just wondering, I don't know, colleagues, how you feel about, you know, raising the amount, two million dollars one time? It's, to me, it's, the work has to come to us anyways. He's going to have to inform us when he's doing these things, so, yeah. I just, I just more of a threshold amount to what your comfort level is. I'm not, I mean, we do, I mean, we've signed off on, you know, the power plant. We buy two hundred million dollars worth of fuel. So this is, yeah. I'm just putting it out there for discussion to see if you guys are okay with, you know, increasing the threshold amount for our GM.
I'm, you know, I'm okay with increasing it to what the PUC limit is, but I don't think we should go past that until we maybe talk with the PUC and have them address it.
I'll have that conversation done. Question, Mike?
Yeah, I know the inflation is going up the past four years with the administration, but I think we're anticipating a lot of changes, especially with the oil and other prices that... I am anticipating and hopeful that the dip will go downward in some of the inflation that we're experiencing. So I'm kind of hopeful and positive that worship, but I'd like to support the GM's request.
Okay.
And thank you, Mr. Chair. And then, so yes, yes, hopefully, again, the PUC moves. But we always keep it, like you said, we always keep the commission informed of what we're doing, and we can do that as part of our regular reports. And then we have to comply for everything, including procurement and all of that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the next resolution, and I apologize for not noting the numbers, FY two thousand and twenty-five point zero eight. And again, what this is, Mr. Chair, is that, as we know, and Commissioners, as we know that the, about several years ago, about sixty percent of the workforce of GPA retireable or can retire. Now, it's in the neighborhood of, in the next, we've dealt with some headwind on that. So now, we're in the neighborhood of about thirty-five percent could retire within the next five years. The numbers there also are quite high for engineering, you know? So we did hire a lot of young engineers from the University of Guam, and they're being trained together. However, here comes the growth. Here comes a lot of grants. Here comes other major projects, you know, requiring for the, to service the customer to be able for them to get power as we move out. Here comes renewables, where we're improving the grid to be able to entertain more and more renewables, because again, it's not a plug-and-play, you know? And so therefore, this is to bring into GPA what you call a strategic program management office, which will be actually engineering firms, or firm or firms that will work with engineering on a task basis on different projects. Design, for example, design of a transmission line. They can go in and do all the legwork and do a net design, and actually, they will stamp it, because they will have to be PEs, and then we can get that project moving and awarded. So in anticipation, really just seeing where we are today, and in anticipation of the potentially huge grants that we're going to be getting from other areas, including, I'm hopeful, from PMA, from DOD, more Department of Energy and other grants. We need, we don't have the manpower to sustain that type of operation. And so this is why we're looking for a PMO. What is the potential cost? This probably engineering, construction, all of that stuff, it's always about, close to, up to maybe fifteen percent of the project. So any of the projects, now that we do whatever, will have that fifteen percent for approval and all of that. And that will be, it's not like we're just spending out there unless we have particular projects for this team to do. So everything will be task-oriented. If you look at what we have today, we have about seventy million in project. So the cost of what to sustain, if we use the PMO for this work, will be about ten million, all of that, seventy million. And so, if you look at the pages that follow, the attachment, I will bring you to the last page of the attachment, if you will. And if you see, it's categorized A, B, C, D, E, and the first one is A, the grants awarded. So we have thirty-one million in grants from DOE and other areas today. And the summary of this is, are in the pages before this one. I'm just going to the summary now. There's also a government of Guam GPA partnerships potential for virtual power plants or other. This is part of the grant that government of Guam received. So we're still working out details on it, but potentially, they're, you're marking around sixty-three million dollars to GPA to try and do virtual power plants, maybe at the schools or other areas, or the community. We have submitted, and it's under grant review, about seven billion dollars of grants. Part of that, if you recall, is to FEMA. We submitted about six point four billion requests to FEMA for transmission underground, distribution underground, more facilities, giving combustion turbine replacement, okay? Energy source, batteries, and so on, so on. Current, other current projects today, potentially could be, again, the seventy million. If you look, the, of course, the new hospital will be about thirty-five million. We would need the assistance, you know? GPA funded is thirty-one. We have about a five million grand from, from Department of Energy to underground distribution system in the Papa eighty-seven. This is the major water wells in, in Dedido. So that's already a grant that's before us. We have a cost share of about a million and something, which we will work in our revenue funding to provide. But it's five million-dollar project, again, is starting to go into taking care of distribution system for the water, for water well. So that in a nutshell is the Strategic Project Management Office. Not only do we have to work on what we have to do today, because although we have engineers, we have a lot of PEs, it's just not adequate to sustain the operations that we need to do moving forward. Later on, at the end of this, I will, I will give you an overview of some of the things that we're working on that will come to, could come to the commission in calendar year two thousand and twenty-five. It's a huge amount of work that we have to get. And again, like I said, I think it might be close to fifty percent of the engineers over the past, since three, three years ago, and over the next five years, are going to be retired. And again, most of them is not if or when or what. They will retire when they're ready, because they're on the DB plan. And after the DB plan, after thirty-six years, you're working for nothing. And all of that. So that, Mr. Chair, is...
Do you allow double dipping in our operation here?
Not like, not like DOE. I mean, I would like to explore that possibility.
You should, John.
Yeah. Take a look at it and then bring it to the board, you know? DOE provides that for the teachers, you know? We've been working to, again, on the power side. We've lost a lot of good personnel, but hopefully, we could have kept them longer on their contract.
I think there's named positions in that law. Tracy, you're nodding your head, the governor's office.
Oh, I don't know about the governor's office.
That allow double dipping.
But I do, I do agree with you. I know that laws have been passed recently for teachers, police, nurses, and other LEOs, I believe.
Okay. So just real quick, I'm sorry, questions, colleagues?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm concerned about the, if you look at the proposed resolution, it's a five-year plus five-year removal. The last one that was brought to us was the, you know, the J.D. Edwards implementation that also was a five plus five. JP, do you envision one company being awarded this?
We're trying to work it over as more than one company. Teamness Water...
I'm just curious, John B., is this something similar to Brown and Caldwell? What Miguel is using that?
That's project management, but this one's...
This is expansive. So therefore, there might be, there might be different companies that...
Depending on what the project is.
But everything now is, they're on board, right? And we have to do work or grants come in, they can help us to get that done, right? So if it's cyber, then we pull the cyber.
Right.
If it's electrical design, we pull that. If it's on some operational issues that need to go, we can pull that. It'll all be on a, on a task basis. We will negotiate the fees and all of that.
So you're, so how do you envision the actual contracting vehicle? Is it a firm fixed price? Is it, you know, is it going to be an IDIQ? Is it, is it going to be one single contractor, or is it going to be an IDIQ? Because I think that we need to start developing our bids where it's an indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity, multiple award contracts, like what the federal government is doing with the MAX, where you have a list of qualified vendors, and you award by task order. So all of those vendors get pre-qualified, and then you initiate a task order, and then they bid on pricing. I think the way this is currently written, and I don't know what the procurement vehicle would be, but it sounds as though it's looking for a single award to do all of these different professional requirements to include cybersecurity and IT.
Yeah, I think the way we're set up now, the RFP is what processes you...
RFP?
Yeah.
Okay.
You pick the, you pick the most qualified.
And then you negotiate with them?
What we're thinking is we'll break, break that down to different categories of qualifications. Or there's one strategic programming office group, break that down. We can look more at the definite quantity stuff, but we can do that. But typically, professional engineering firms and all of that, they don't really bid on projects. It's more a task order type of scenario. So we just have to make sure that they, that they're qualified and can get us, you know? So, but we can take a look at that more.
Do you have something similar to what...
Well, what we have is the...
Is there an IDIQ on this?
We have the Brown and Caldwell, that's the only thing, not Brown and Caldwell. We have the Stanley Consultants, you know?
Okay.
That's the one that's doing the power plan.
Right.
And also doing the LNG research, research study to be done.
Can I just ask, on the federal grant side, what is our indirect cost? What do we normally charge? I mean, I know, for some reason, I've always heard you pick out the area and go ten percent, but I know sometimes it's higher. Is there a magic point? I'm sorry, is there a sweet point that we have for federal indirect costs?
I think, I think that you're right. It does vary. In some grants, yes. In some grants, we, if it's allowed, we would ask for salary of a temporary person itself. Other grants would be, like you said, depending on the type of work the GPA has to do, the percentage. So...
So it's not technically a fixed rate, right?
No. But to Senator, I mean, to Commissioner Lim Tiyako's point, we have been, we have just got, started discussions when, with Senator Sabina Perez several years ago, probably pre-COVID, to discuss changing the procurement law to allow MAX, multiple award contracts, multiple award construction contracts. We approached her years ago about this, and we've had, we had several meetings, although we haven't seen any, any legislation yet. But we had several meetings on it, because we anticipated having large grant awards come in. And with any, you know, grant awards, you have a certain amount of time to spend the money. And given the, the current environment of very difficult environment to get contractors and to get things on time, we thought that having a MAC with one C or two Cs would certainly work. The current procurement law doesn't preclude us, but it doesn't allow it. So we wanted it to be specifically correct. So we're going to continue those discussions with, I believe it's Senator Duaneus, who might have administration...
Oversight Chair, Senator Duane.
Correct.
So again, this one is the RFP process for us, is what we're going through this. Unless we find anything else different before that, but we'll take that under consideration. But the bidding after so on, so, yeah, we would love to be something similar, but it's not been anything we could do.
Not right now, but if the procurement law has changed, you can pursue that.
Yes. And, and like you said, been saying, we've been trying, but they've been very...
We have a different legislature, John, and I'm very hopeful that the Republicans are more receptive than my fellow Democrats.
Just like protests. I mean, we do so many things now just to try and get away from protest. Things that take a lot of energy, take a lot of cost, maybe in time, you know? So, you know, we hope that we can do something...
I mean, I encourage you, you know, your team to start reaching out to them. We'll do our own, talking to our, to our senators, but the opportunity is there now, because they all want change, positive change. So we need to, you know, inform them of what we really need to do to get things moving.
So when you get a chance, if you look through the projects that are there, the ones that are awarded, and it's all over places, we're concentrating on the integration of renewables to ensure that we, you know, the power quality is maintained. Secondly, underground system to make it more resilient and all of that. So we've been getting a lot from Department of Energy and all of them. So on the big one, we're going to continue to working. Hopefully, it's now almost two years now since we submitted our, our requests, and so hopefully, something good happens.
I'm going to ask, I mean, on this, this project that the governor's asked us to help, what is our indirect cost on this one, if it's...
I believe, I can bring that to you, Mr. Chair, but I believe our engineering group has...
Oh, I've come up with a cost, okay. So can I ask, who's going to be our subject matter expert in our team here? Because we need one neck to grab other than yours, John.
For the...
For this office?
Oh, this office, the, this is under the Agmet office, yeah.
What I want to know.
Oh, this office, the, the, this is under the Agmet Office, yeah, and an engineer, yep. The, and again, there are, uh, uh, it, it, that's why it, it move, uh, not only from engineering, but to cybersecurity and everything. Because it's encompassing the whole organization. And again, this is as needed to sustain or accomplish and to spend the grants. Because we've been getting a lot of grants, not only for ourselves, and as you know, sir, we have, uh, gotten grants for D O E, for changing L E D, uh, G W, Southern High.
I saw your project this year.
Doing those grants for them, right? Now, the reason why we've gotten good grants is because when we get the grant, we get it done, no? And so, this is the point that as I look ahead, uh, I mean, we may have a happy problem. But to be ready to accomplish it, we need the help getting this done.
Do you have the R F P already, John?
Uh, they're preparing it actually right now. This is hot off the press and it just, the G M said, hey, I think we're going to need to. I know you need help, but then we need to get something, so.
I'd like to see the R F P before we pass the resolution.
Sure, no.
I mean, John, I'm looking at your grant project list on our friends at G D O E. This is only six of thirty six schools. We have a long ways to go.
Yeah.
And this is just lighting.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, and that's why again, Mr. Chair, it'd probably be a good idea to talk to the Chair of the Education Board.
Yes.
Because, uh, as we, you and I and others have been pursuing, a performance management contractor.
I messaged our good friend, Dr. Akada, already. We need to go back in and talk because you're, I mean, something as simple as grass cutting.
They, they need somebody to.
We have a solution, I think that will happen.
Won't you be able to finish the R F P with Commissioner Lim Tiako, the meeting?
It's gonna take a little bit. It's not going to be done by Tuesday, so I mean, uh, the, I guess I'm here before you. I want to see, know whether you're okay with moving, uh, moving forward. If it's just the details of the other thing, we can, we can work that out, no?
I think we need to look at the term. I think we need to look at the term and just limiting it to five years. I think we need to look at an I D I Q, so I'm not, I'm not sure what the propensity for the legislature to pursue the legislation and how quickly they can do it. But, um, it's worth a conversation with the senators.
Yeah.
Yeah, but in, but in the meantime, we'd like to get moving, you know, on, on this because we have a lot to do. So I won't, uh, as much as I, well, I won't comment on the, the, the expediency of getting all that other thing. It's just that I need to get moving on.
Yeah, if you need to get moving on something, you might want to just decrease the term of the contract. So then you can have, so you can give some time for the I D I Q, the procurement laws to be changed so that you could resellisit it.
Well, the problem with all of that now is that again, the process to go out for the bid and everything, you know, it takes time getting approval. After your approval, I have to go to the, to the P U C. So if you don't approve it on Tuesday, I can't move anymore until, I'm sorry, until, to the P U C at least to get their approval. That yes, this is the way it is, and so and so. Now, uh, the reason why for five-year and ten-year terms is because then you get teams that really know your systems and all of that. And listen to the five-year and option for second five is because we have a lot of, like, young engineers that we're hiring and we train and everything. So at some point in time, they'll be taking more, we're more and more of the, of the work. And it could be that in five years, uh, if we don't have big, big projects, then we don't need. If we have big projects, then, you know, it costs less and less and all of that. It's just that we, uh, it's hard to keep on going now, getting approvals and, and then, uh, you know, getting teams that are familiar already with your system and moving forward. So that's why we're looking.
I just don't, I just don't think that the R F P is the right contract vehicle for it. I think, uh, to solicit it, I think the I D I Q, the, the M A C type of, um, solicitation would benefit G P A. Because you're going to have, you're going to have.
Okay, so why don't we, uh, why don't we, uh, add in the resolution that we will pursue an I D I Q? But if not, uh, we'll need to proceed to, so then I can move forward and getting the approval, your approval and the P U C approval.
I don't see a problem with having a shorter term so that you could allow for the legislature to change the procurement law.
Shorter term meaning how?
Less than five years. Like maybe you do a two or three-year contract, uh, under R F P, and then you pursue legislation. And then that, that's going to, that's going to benefit you.
If something is better than nothing is what I'm trying to say, so three, three years is.
This is just my opinion, J B. You have, you have three other commissioners here that can chime in on what they, what they think is right.
I'm fine with three years, that is okay. Uh, I'm just trying to, but I think, uh, three, you know, three years is a good enough time to, to get a lot of pages. And yeah, hopefully something gets better, can be done there. I'm fine with that.
Commissioner Joyce?
I, I kind of agree with, uh, Commissioner Lim Tiako. Five to ten year, uh, we know you've been doing great, John, and, uh, but you know, sometimes at our age, I mean, are we going to be around five, ten years sometimes, you know? We, we plan for the future, but I, I think, uh, if the kings can be ironed out like what was mentioned, uh, it'll be more a smooth sailing into the future that somebody that would quarterback this, uh, in case, uh, uh, you know, you decide to do something else or whatever in, in our age, unless you plan to stay until. I'm just saying, I, you know, I, I, again, it's good to chunk it down so that it's doable, so I can.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate the, uh, the, uh, the path, no, getting what you're heading to. So, uh, three years, I can, I can go with three years. Uh, can, perhaps if you make it three years, we've an option for three. And then I, before I implement the option, I have to come back to yourselves, no? So that way we don't need to, again, if we don't get this thing changed, no? We have some scenarios that will continue, otherwise we go through the process again, so.
I'd like to see the R F P. I, I'd like to see what it is. I, I want to see what the intent of the award is. You said by task order.
Yeah.
But is, what is the, what is the award then? Yeah, so it's, uh, it almost sounds like it's an I D I Q for a single contractor.
For example, the, the transmission line Papa eighty-seven needs to be designed and put all the specifications together for the bid and so and so. So that's a task order system, no? It could, and that could include construction management after we award, no? Or, and again, through the process, so that would be a task order. And that project has five million dollars you have his money, no, for the scenario.
But there's no, there's no price, there's no price proposal at any point in time. You just, you just negotiate back and forth. So let's say you award this to one company.
To engineering company.
Right.
Yeah, this is not a bid now for construction, right? This is engineering company.
Right.
So that, that's, uh, so if engineering company, now, uh, my familiar, familiarity is they don't bid really for, for, uh, uh, for that type of, for, for services like that. They just provide their, their, and then they have their rates.
Time and materials or something?
And then what you do is when, uh, you get the lowest bidder, I'm sorry, you get the most qualified and then you negotiate, uh, pricing, no? And if you're not satisfied, uh, for whatever reason and, and stuff, then you can go to the, to the second, uh, highest qualified. So that's the way.
This is during the award process. Once you award it, what happens?
No, then you have, you have fees, no?
Okay.
If you, they come in and they say, okay, just to do this work, I have a senior engineer for so many hours, blah, 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 for so many hours, blah, blah, blah.
That's during the negotiation process?
No, that's in the task order.
During the task order? So those fees can go up if they choose and.
No, the fees are set, you said that in the negotiation, in the white process.
Okay.
And they may, you know, uh, so, and then again, so then that's the task. So, uh, so some decide, some work now is going to be easier than others, no? And so, so that's the process, uh, now, no?
Are, are we contained with just the local, uh, working with the local engineers in this or?
I think they have to have the, they have to have a professional engineering license in, in Guam, no?
They have to, so we can open to better options also or.
Well, outside they come and bid in, right? But then they have local firms or whatever.
Together.
Yeah, yeah, especially when it comes to what we're asking for, not like, uh, transmission, distribution lines and, well, they, we want them to be, uh, stamped.
Yeah, well, maybe for the, um, the Tuesday, it's only mixed league.
Yeah.
And the resolution is more or less just the management that authority to move forward with this type of program. A three-year, less renewable, three years, uh, is one. And what Mike, uh, Commissioner Tiako was stating about the I D, I Q type, um, curve, maybe incorporate that into, into the. Resolution so that, uh, management has the option to look both here.
Hmm, if it happens.
If that's okay with management.
I'm, I'm fine. I can reduce the term. I can do it. It's just that I, I do need to, if you will, just move forward. And then if, uh, things, uh, and again, we'll, we'll see what conditions we put in within our contracts to be able to allow us to get to the I D Q or whatever. Uh, I'll talk to our team whether they can have something by Tuesday. Uh, I think they're, again, it was hot off, hot off, uh, hot off my, from my direction, so. Cause I could see already the mono work that we have to do and when we become.
If we can't get it by Tuesday, uh, John, um, I think it would be to the benefit of all the commissioners to see it and understand it and just push it to next month. But we, I definitely want to see it from my pers- I don't know what, what the other commissioners, but I'd like to see it.
Me as well.
We can always recess the meeting too, to address.
I mean, this is a paradigm shift for us. Something, I mean, it's something you do, but you don't really.
No, no problem, I will.
No, I, I, John, I'm, I'm, I'm taking guidance from what Commissioner Tiako is saying. I mean, if we, if you feel you're prepared and ready to go, that's a different ask. But I think in all due respect to his requests, if we have an R F P in development, that's the product we really want to see.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, I'm glad you provided a lot of feedback.
By Tuesday, if not, we'll delay it until, uh, next month.
Okay.
No problem.
Right.
Yeah, I understand.
No problem. Your G M report, then, sir. I'm sorry, anything else, colleagues, on the, on the issues for decision? There's only three, and you mentioned, uh, the two pending items. What, one I know is the M O A. What's the second one?
Uh, urea, urea, it's on the.
Agenda?
It's on the, uh, the announcement for, right? Announcement for the Tuesday.
Okay.
Urea is the, again, the, uh, one utilized by the diesel engines, Greco and, and diesel. You can run it before urea because it's an environmental, uh, emission, uh, scenario. So, and again, it's, uh, uh, I believe urea is covered under the, uh, the LEAC. I have to check, but it's just something we need to, and so they, we are getting the urea, it's just that we, uh, we need to be. And again, because we're running Greco, maybe close twelve to eighteen hours a day. Uh, whereas we were hardly running G G diesel because they were not running before, our use of urea is going up, no? So. Okay, uh, that is all I have for the resolution, Mr. Chair. Uh, in terms of the, um, a G M report, uh, I just want to highlight, uh, just three items actually.
Go ahead.
And then, uh, if you want me to go through it.
We're on page seventeen in our board book, so which items are you?
We do, I just want to make one correction there. Uh, it says two ninety-seven is our capacity. Today's two seventy-three.
Okay.
But if you look at all the numbers, it's really all correct. Uh, capas number one is down for, uh, about, uh, to the end of the month for maintenance. It's been running well. However, we have to take her down and do maintenance. It's been running maybe four to six months now continuously. So if you recall in November of the, of the la- uh, November after, last year is the, the twenty-third, November of twenty twenty-three. That's when they, they were going up and down, up and down after typhoon, after the typhoon. Uh, but they've been staying up now, uh, and stuff, so.
That's a schedule, schedule, John.
Yeah, we're, we're scheduling. We, we can keep running it, but then at some point, something might, you know? So we're going to bring it down and, and do maintenance on the air conditioner, other stuff like that, so. So that's down actually as of, uh, as of, uh, Fri- Friday or so. Yeah, so it's already there inside, they're working now.
Do you still work around the clock to get, to get that thing on or it's not as much a?
Not, uh, around the clock, probably about twelve, maybe twelve hours.
Two shifts.
Twelve hours a day and stuff. So that's, uh, again, because we also have limited manpower, and then. We only work our personnel, typically twelve and no more than sixteen.
Sixteen?
They, one, six, they have to go home and rest before, for safety reasons.
With our situation, it's good to try to get that back and ready.
Secondly, a few prices have been creeping up as, uh, since November. Uh, the Trump got elected and it creeped down a little bit and stuff. So, and we don't know yet where it's going to go, but, uh, but that's, uh, you see that in the graphs. Uh, sales are beginning to creep up for us, not a huge, but I think over the next year or two. This is really when the sales are going to start coming in, uh, for ourselves. Uh, the power plan is again continuing, uh, they're looking at doing the first firing, the first combustion turbine, uh, in early February, no? And then that's the process, so, uh, boom, one at a time and all of that, uh, going through.
Is there anything planned for that, John? Are you guys going to, you guys going to be on site and?
No, 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 we, we want to, we want to be on site when they are, when they're really running, when they're, we're.
We can be there when we jumpstart.
Where I'm saying they're really running is when their combustion turbine is operating and they're running the, the steam turbine. So now you're getting, instead of forty, for the same amount of oil you're burning at forty-five, you're getting fifty percent more energy with the steam site. Cause the way that works, uh, is that the, right now, if you just run the combustion turbine, the exhaust coming out, no?
Yes.
That's going up into the air is close to nine hundred degrees. So what they're doing is they're redirecting that to like a radiator boiler, reduce steam and run a turbine. So by doing that, yeah, they're getting another forty-five, uh, fifty percent of the energy that the, additional fifty percent of what the, the generator is producing. So that's what they call, uh, a thermal efficiency now fifty-one to, or almost fifty-two percent.
Projected for February?
Projected for these units, once they're on the line, they're so efficient, you don't find this, uh, everywhere, no? Uh, most of the, most efficient now are about sixty-some percent, but that's when you have three hundred megawatts of capacity. But for forty-five megawatt machines, this are, uh, uh, pretty efficient. The one in Malta.
The one?
Yeah, that one is similar to this one. And that one is also burning natural gas, yeah.
Mr. Chair, were you able to do a side visit before you find out?
I'm waiting for him.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to set up and you can join us.
That'd be nice.
I asked, I asked John to see the inside, not the outside.
Yeah.
It's very pretty outside, but let's go, I mean, you're looking at the pictures that they provided us, it's.
Yep.
Looks very nice from, I would like to go inside this turbine and see.
You weren't, you weren't.
I wouldn't move you guys, but did you guys go inside?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, I wasn't, you know, yeah, but I, I'd like to hear when it's humming. But it's actually turned on and, yeah.
So just two more items, Mr. Chair, and just very quickly on the issues for discussion. The first one is LEAC update.
Uh, yeah.
So on the LEAC update, uh.
Seventeen?
Page, uh, what page, uh, Candice, you know, on the LEAC, the recent, no, page?
Twenty-one?
It's always the end, after the G M report.
What page?
One oh six on the.
One oh six?
Yeah.
Just real quick, John, J B, on the pending dockets, what was the, what was the rationale to, uh, um, to defer the petition to review the net metering?
That's, uh.
It just, it just says docket not to be heard until further notice?
P U C.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm trying to get asked the chairman if we can, uh, work on, uh, on that.
But they didn't give you a reason?
Uh, well, uh, not quite sure. I mean, there was issues, some issue about providing information on costs and all of that. Which we have provided some, uh, issues on, um, impact on the systems. We have provided some. I think we have shown that, uh, when there's too many, too many, uh, uh, solar P Vs and the distribution. I think we have shown that when there's too many, too many solar PVs and the distribution line, it does create some fluctuations.
I was just wondering, did they give a rationale as to why they're postponing it?
No, they were actually going to bring it up maybe about six months ago or so, but then, so I'm asking the chair if we can, because why? Right now, the solar, the net metering customers are being subsidized, or I would like to say subsidized, in other words, they're not paying up close to $5 million that they would have paid if they were a regular customer, because they're using the grid, so in the daytime or wherever, they're sending all that to the grid, and in the evening, they use it, they're not paying, it's the grid that's owned by the whole, whole the rate pairs, right? So that, and again, that's the way the net metering is set up, which is okay, and they really want to promote more and more renewables. So right now, that's about equivalent to 5 million. But then other things that have happened, even though we had said no to Senator Parkinson, and I will say that, increase the cap from 100 to 500. So now more and more are coming in, and we're requiring actually some batteries for over 250, no? Because you can, it'll be impacted to the, to the grid, no? There's more and more grants that are being provided for, for...
Solar.
Solar. When you get a grant, right, you're basically getting almost no cost, right? But then at the same time, you're getting a full, full credit of the LIAC plus the base rate, so you're not paying the debt. The debt is there for everybody to pay. None of this solar is paying for the debt. They're not paying for any, any of the operation and maintenance expenses. So again, we have about 2,700, a little more, and 35 megawatts of that out in the system. But this thing can now start to grow with grants and everything, so I'm concerned that, as you know, base rate, right, is to, to cover investments and everything in the system. And, and if this thing starts to take off, this could be the, the non-payment or non-contribution to the system could go from 5 million to 10 million to 15 million, no? A year, so now you're looking, you're impacting the rates for everybody else, no? Especially now, again, as we're all looking towards, we haven't raised the base rate, as everyone knows, since 2013. It's always, we've been surviving despite inflation, despite, and we won't be going in to make an adjustment to it if it wasn't to have to pay for the new power plant so that we can get the fuel savings, no? But all of this will start impacting the future, I think. So again, moving forward, if you look, the oil prices have increased, no? As much as $11, if you look at the, as page two, if you look, I'm sorry, page three is for, is for diesel, because we're using two type of fuel, RFO at cabras and diesel with all the other power plants. So again, the, the blue is what we, is when we file in November. If you look at page four, the $98 a barrel, if you look, the current pricing are anywhere between 98, right, down to 92, whereas before it was 86 to about $86. So that's about $11 change in the pricing. The next page is, again, as we can see, in our highest point, LIAC was at 30, almost 32 cents a kilowatt hour, which means our cost of energy for customers was as much as about 41, almost 42 cents a kilowatt hour. Today, at 26 cents a kilowatt hour, our cost of energy is about 35, 36 cents has come down, no? With the new LIAC filing, that will go down to about 20.8 plus, about 20, about 30 cents a kilowatt, again, plus or minus a little bit, 30 cents a kilowatt hour. And when we get to Okudu, again, that will come down, right? But, but despite, Mr. Chair, I was thinking, despite that the, that the prices are going up a little bit, I would like to, with your permission, I'd like to go ahead and just recommend to the PUC to just hold, just go ahead and, and, and implement the 20.8 cents that we had noted. What would that do? You go from a zero under recovery, maybe anywhere to between 6 and 12 million, no?
For the next six months.
By July.
Yeah.
We have gone to 47 million.
At our highest point.
We have recovered, we have been recovering. With the 6 to 12 million, we can still pay our bills to buy oil, which has always been our biggest concern, no? And again, as we look ahead, despite what may be out there and today in the news and media, whatever, when Okudu comes on the line, the, the rates for the customers will come down, no? The total cost will come down, it will decrease, no? So, because we know we're going to continue to decrease down, why not just hold this at this point so we can help the customers of today as we move forward? Even if it goes up a little bit, it's, it's going to go down. We will still recover our under recovery, most especially when the Okudus Commission, and even during some of the testing period, during some of the testing period, they're going to be running more efficient than the system. That's, that is not, that's not something we calculated in the, in the protocol to the, to the PUC, because again, we're going to have definitive times and everything, but I know when you start testing, even the combustion turbine, that's cheaper than a lot of our, what we're, a lot of the generators that we're burning, that are producing energy today. So we're going to see some decrease in our, in our total bill, so I'm just, you know, does the commissioner send any thoughts when I go to the PUC on the meeting? I'll just ask the chairman and the commissioners, just go ahead and implementing the 20.8 cents as we have loaded. We know that our under recovery won't be zero, but again, this is the year that that under recovery will go away, and at the same time, even go away and reduce the total cost to the customers as we had always said. So I have no doubt in that, and, and again, we can, this is a kind of a happy problem that we're, we're in, not like before, where if you notice in, in 2021, I didn't bring my sheet, but in 2021 is when we started going higher and higher in prices, and now we within...
Can you just go to, I have it on page 111, the actual LIAC?
Yep, there it is.
Yes, so, so we're now at January 2025. What, what is that under, I'm sorry, it's over recovery at this, what are we looking at?
Right now, December, under recovery is about 15,000. So where are you currently?
Zero.
So we're getting there because of the...
Yeah.
Yep, so again, the, because of where we're going...
When, when is the next expected fuel delivery? I think it's every quarter we have, right?
Forty days, forty to forty-five.
Yeah, I think the delivery, what I heard is, what I've seen is the, the end of, the end of this month, there'll be another shipment. So that's good, so at least if it goes up, we're getting a good deal, but, but, so again, because it's going to be trending down, even if it trend up a little bit, it's still going to be down before the end of the year. I suggest that they just hold what we had, that commissioner had approved at 20.8 cents, so there's no objection to that really, I'll just go ahead and, and ask the...
Going to help our rate pairs during it's morning.
That will help the rate pairs, so.
All right. Anything else?
One last thing, and very quickly, Mr. Chair, is the, I just wanted to provide an overview of significant events, programs, and issues for GP, CCU, and calendar year 2025, no? I didn't number it because it looks like a lot, but again...
Thank you, John.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioning of Okudu, and again, what page is that we're in?
114.
Yeah.
113.
I have 114, that's fine.
Just type in that.
John, only because it's, what's happening with my friends at the GFK solar project?
Uh, we have already, they did a system impact study. They were informed what needs to be done to be able to, to feed out to the system and also tie in to the GP, because they cannot provide their full energy, so they have to go on, because the only rate we have now is standby rate.
Right.
So they have to use standby rate and all of that, so it's really the balls in their part.
Okay.
In the, yeah, the balls in their part at this point, no? So we're just waiting when they're, they'll get that, but they have to do some change, changes in the...
Their system.
In their system, yeah.
All right.
Again, Okudu coming online, we have to retire cabras within six months, and we're going to try and do that within three months. We're looking at, trying to now look at the decommissioning of all of these power plans, then eastern one, two, and, cabras one, two, and three, three and four, and all of that. So we're working on a plan. Liquid nitrogen gas, the, the study will be done in, someone, probably around May, so we'll have an idea what that would look like and where it might be. Phase four renewables, Mr. Chair, right now, Kepco has a contract as before the AG for their approval, where they wait, again, on, on some of their requirements, arbitration or stuff, so we're, we're waiting for that, right, Marian? Once that's ready, then they'll give it to the ALJ, and if it's satisfied, it signs off, then we can sign off with the Kepco contract. Cortec, we're, we're still working negotiations with them. Hopefully, the contract that's approved with the AG will provide to them so that they can, we can work something out and get it done and stuff. So those are the two that are particular. Again, Mojave, we're having some discussions with them, but, so those are the only two really that are moving forward right now, and we're still working with the others, no?
Do you anticipate awarding to, to, you know, all of the...
Our intention is to award to everyone, but if they can complete what they need to do, and they cannot complete it within the price that they had set it up, no? Then it won't be possible, but again, it's basically all within their own merits or so on and so, no? It's not really whether I'm better than so and so, it's, if they cannot complete what they're coming in at the price that's set, then we won't come to you with our recommendation. And that's what the CCU has approved, is that we will come to you whenever anyone is ready, so the next one will be in Mojave's ready and all that, then we will come to you, but right now, we're still working in there.
What's happening on the Hanwha project?
The Hanwha project, the drop dead date on that is around one or two months from March. They have to order stuff and everything to be, and if they don't, then I'm, I'm coming to you and stuff, so that's the, and I can't do much until that date, but once that happens, if they don't...
Deliver.
Deliver, then...
We're done.
Then stuff, because again, I would have to let EPA know that they couldn't deliver, no, and to figure out, work with them on something else.
May I, may I ask, when is the projected time for the decommissioning of cabras, you said?
The, under the consent decree, after the commissioning of Okudu, I mean, which means COD commission day, which is when they are ready to produce and with the contract paying them and all that.
So once it's leveling out in Okudu, we can decommission it?
Once we have commissioned that, that ceremony and that date, no? Then within six months, we have to shut down cabras. So our plan is, we're going to, once we know Okudu is going to be at this state, we're ordering less and less fuel, so then we can shut down cabras after that.
Is there a way we can hold that as a reserve? Because like right now, we're fixing it to, to go into shutdown and fix all the air heaters and stuff, but then you decommission, do you do without the...
No, we can keep it on reserve because the new power plant, one of the major objectives, actually, it was to comply with the 2012, 2013 federal regulations, right? So the commission everywhere decided, and we have also, like, we have recommended is that instead of putting in a lot of money to, to make cabras compliant, no? And you're still not efficient and all of that. And to avoid millions of dollars, hundreds of millions actually, that was, you know, we can look at the articles over there, that potentially the EPA could find us, we came to an agreement that we're going to build a new power plant and commission it, and then retire cabras. With the new power plant, we're building it, but it's, and it's going to save substantial amount of fuel, enough money to pay for the power plant and still have a substantial amount of savings to the rate pairs, because the new power plant is actually going to reduce the, the annual consumption of fuel oil by almost 900,000 barrels a year, no?
Yes.
And so that, being that way, we're less susceptible again to prices going, right? So that's all part of the consent decree, so by, by, which is a federal consent decree, right? So we have to shut down cabras, and, and again, it's just 50 years old and it's complicated.
I do understand. My question is, we're totally reliable on Okudu, but for unforeseen reason, I'll throw in a curve ball, a worst case scenario, and Okudu blows up, where does the island of Guam is left for any, any emergency situation reserve if we just totally get rid of the, just because we have a new, new machine here? There's rockets that blows up, brand new, but, and we, we want this to happen, but you know, again, in the worst case situation, where does that leave our island in case if we don't have anything? I know cabras is old, but there's a lot of things that can be circumvented and manually done. I think emission wise, maybe we're, we'll, you know, we can be fine, but in emergency situation and Guam doesn't have no power, I think we need some kind of a background situation so that unless we have another plant to, to rely on.
So we, I will, I will show you that we do have backup reserves, no?
Enough?
Yep, we have the MECPD eight and nine, that's 86 megawatts. We have DED combustion turbine 40, so I have a whole, we have a whole list, so that if the 198 goes down, right, we have the capacity.
Yes.
In addition to that, the renewables that we are awarding phase four, right? And then, then I, if you look in this list also, there's a, there's a listing for centralized energy storage batteries, right? When we have that, that shapes the peak, so we will have adequate capacity and will not have a need for a cabras one and two, and so...
DED combustion, did that blow up at one time? Rectifying is running fine now?
No, we, we ran, we renovated that about 10 years ago. We put $10 million, and it's been working ever since to all, you know, remember the cabras three and four explosion?
Yes.
Been running since then, it's the only one that ran through the storm.
Yes. And then our, our gas turbine situation, they're getting ready, you know, coughing sometimes along the way and need, you know?
Yeah, we have been investing in them. We have been investing in, and again, once Okudu is finished, we'll be before you to invest some more in them so that they, they are available for the timeframe, because they're not going to be running like today. Today, we're running them almost like intermediate and base rate, right?
So that's good that we, you know, just for the island that it doesn't go, but I remember cabras four and, three and four, we were very excited when we commissioned it, but then, you know, like, it doesn't take too many years and we, it doesn't work, and it put a dent on our resources, you know? But it's good to plan so that, you know, we, we really don't go into a real jeopardy situation so that we don't decommission too... we really don't go into a real jeopardy situation, so that we don't decommission too early, you know, and because if there's a way, we don't have to run it, but there's a way to keep it on a standby mode, you know, just in case until we are very, very comfortable with, you know, and everything is smooth sailing on this new, new thing.
Yep.
Yeah.
So anyway, yeah, I will show the, all the capacity and what the plan is to maintain the reliability, understanding your concern and all of that. But the, the only thing is that we do have a mandate, and again, we only have six months leverage, so the most, you know, the most we can keep it before you, before you just begin the whole complete decommission is six months, unless we go back to the court. Again, ninety megawatts to two hundred and eighty, I may be coming to you with at least ninety megawatts to get off the dime and getting this thing going, but again, these are things that will be coming to you throughout there. Here's the strategic management, implementation of grant awards. Again, we're continuing to look for funds for underground system, we have put into FEMA, and we continue with COMDOE. We're also trying to do the cybersecurity, we're getting, we may be getting some funds too for the, for the upgrade of the SCADA system and disaster. Plus, also, we're asking for, to help us fiber optic the rest of the system. We have about over sixty percent of our network already in fiber optics, so just the remaining portion to, before the fiber optics, we're kind of isolated in, you know, from external influence, no? We may be looking at commercial paper, we're trying to figure out the commercial or bonding to, for the significant projects that we have. Again, we're still working that out. We have to overall, dedicated CT, and again, can do that, because it's been ten years and they've been running mega base loads, and now they're industrial units, they're put in in nineteen ninety-two, they're thirty-some years old, but we can still continue to have them available for, for standby, no? And again, other transformer replacements, so there's a lot on the plate coming before you, Mr. Chair, that. And so I just wanted to give you an overview on that. Other than that, unless, I was, I need to do a briefing for Commissioner Duennis and anyone else that will want to after the, after the board session, Mr. Chair, unless you want me to do it now and stuff.
Good, good. Okay, anything else, colleagues?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Mr. Chair? Thank you, we are adjourned.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.